Good morning, everybody. Welcome to City Hall. Good morning, everybody. Welcome to City Hall. Welcome to Council Chambers and welcome to a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council for today, Friday, March 12, 2004. The City Council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. Meetings are open to the public and we do invite you to join us. For members of the public unable to attend council meetings, we can be viewed live on your cable station, Channel 35. We can also be viewed live via webcast from the city's homepage or heard via council phone. It is 10:15 a.m. and we have eight members present, two shy of a quorum, but this being Friday, as is customary, we have a number of special presentations and recognitions scheduled before calling upon our first presentation. Let me recognize Councilmember Weiss for a brief introduction.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Good morning. We've got a number of great school kids with us today, and I would like to introduce to all of you the Brentwood School First Grade Class. If you guys could please stand up for me. Brentwood School, we all want to see you and wave to us. These are the first graders from Ms. Slavens and Ms. Hans class. Welcome to City Hall, guys. Love it. Thank you, guys, very much for coming and hope you have a great trip. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Weiss. And for our first presentation, let me recognize Councilmember Perry.
Thank you very much, Mr. President and colleagues. This is a very exciting morning, and we have three very special men I am honoring today. The first individual is Captain Thomas Reggie Mayweather. He is a distinguished member of our very own Los Angeles Police Department, and he has been a tremendous asset at our Newton Community Police Station, working hard for years to promote community involvement and to reduce crime at all levels. Recently, Captain Mayweather was appointed to the LAPD Special Operations Unit, and while I'm sad to say that he will be retiring soon, I wanted to take this opportunity to recognize him and honor what he has done in his capacity as a captain at the Newton Division. He will be missed by all of us who have known him and have had the pleasure of working with him, and I just wanted to publicly say thank you for all you have done to make the city of Los Angeles a safer and better place in which to live.
Do you want to say a few quick words? I want to take a picture in the back. Say a few quick words.
I just want to briefly say a very, very large thank you to this city. This is the city that raised me. I consider it a blessing to be able to serve, and I've been very happy every day I've spent with the Los Angeles Police Department, and I'm just looking forward to continuing to serve the city in the future. Thank you.
All right, the next individual is also a very special person, has a special place in our Los Angeles history, and I would like to call up Arnett Hartsfield, founder of the African-American Firefighters Museum, along with Brent Burton from the Los Angeles County Stentorians. Mr. Hartsfield was the founder of the African-American Firefighter Museum and is a true legend here in the city of Los Angeles because he has contributed much to our history. He is originally from the Ninth Council District and graduated from Manual Arts High School in 1936, attended UCLA, and later received a Bachelor of Arts degree in economics from the University of Southern California in 1950, followed by a law degree in 1955. He co-authored a book entitled "The Old Stentorians: A History of the Integration of the Los Angeles Fire Department." In 1961, he retired from the fire department after 20 years of service, then went on to practice law and taught at prestigious universities like the University of California, Los Angeles, South Bay University, and Cal State University, Long Beach. The International Association of Black Professional Firefighters honored Arnett Hartsfield by naming former quarters of Engine 46 at Vernon and Normandy Avenue in his name in 1980, and Arnett has truly made a difference in the career trajectory of many people of color within the fire department and fire services and helped to shape the current department as it is now. I also wanted to recognize him as an outstanding figure in the development of our human relations history for the entire city of Los Angeles and salute him for his incredible achievements. Thank you so much.
I had the idea, but it was the men that I worked with that carried it out. I hope that they won't be forgotten.
Thank you so much. Okay, now, now we're going to have pandemonium break loose. Can I have everybody from Accelerated come up here? Everybody, come on up. Come on up, everybody. Yeah, oh yeah, bring them all up. Come on. And then Jonathan, Jonathan, is Kevin here too?
I don't know.
Okay, all right, Jonathan, come on up here. Okay, all the kids, come on up. You don't want, you don't want him to be lonely up here. All right, bring your flags. Okay, and let's, let's say happy birthday to Elliot, who's six years old today from the Kinder County class. He's got a crown on. Happy birthday, Elliot. Okay. Thank you very, very, very much. Okay, Jonathan doesn't know why he's here today, so I'm going to tell you right now. I am so proud to be able to present a resolution to this incredible individual who has devoted his time to improving the quality of education for our children. Mr. Jonathan Williams, one of the founders and co-directors of the Accelerated School located in the Ninth District in South Los Angeles, began his teaching career with the Los Angeles Unified School District in 1990 and was elected to the United Teachers of Los Angeles Teachers Union and served as the chairman. He served in this capacity for three years and was elected to the UTLA House of Representatives in 1993. He has worked along with his co-partner, Kevin Sved, to be the best educator possible by developing and presenting model teaching techniques and participating in numerous development activities. These experience combined with a background in sales and banking inspired him to become a pioneer in education reform. He serves on the Board of Directors for the California Network of Educational Charters and the California Advisory Commission on Charter Schools. Jonathan, along with Kevin Sved, wrote the charter document, secured the necessary financing, recruited and hired staff, and opened the first charter school in South Los Angeles, the Accelerated School. Okay, everybody, give yourselves a big hand. And under the leadership of Jonathan and Kevin, the Accelerated School is undergoing a major transformation in student academic performance and construction to facilitate sustained growth and the demand of over 2,000 students on its waiting list, and that's because they get some of the highest test scores in the region. The Accelerated School students, on average, have doubled their scores on the standardized test in temporary facilities, and in 2001, the school received the distinction of being named Elementary School of the Year by Time Magazine. Now, here's the exciting part. Now, we didn't know how lucky we were, and now we have somebody who's even more important in our midst and will be able to take our concerns statewide directly to the governor because he has been selected by the governor to be the appointee to the State Board of Education. So, having a relationship with him is even more significant now. He's already established that he can turn an entire community around and create a future for children that we had not even begun to dream of, and so I've asked Jonathan to come here today with all of his students, the teachers, and the parents, to honor him for this extraordinary accomplishment because I know in his new capacity, he is certain to continue to lead the way for a brighter future for learning for every single child here in the state of California. And remember, he started here in the Ninth Council District, Jonathan.
Thank you, and it's just so nice being here and being recognized by the council. Thanks to the councilwoman for all the great support that she's helped us in terms of developing the facility and growing the school and the connections to community. But most importantly, I want to acknowledge something that my mom told me, and this is for the kids who are here today. She told me that you will be defined by the company that you keep. If you spend time with good people, you become a good person, and that's something that's very near and dear to me. What she really said, kids, is if you hang around with dogs, you catch fleas. I'm fortunate that we haven't spent much time hanging with the dogs and really appreciate this acknowledgement today, and certainly will work my best to help Los Angeles and all the kids in the state of California. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Ms. Perry. Mr. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Cardenas, Garcetti, Gruel, Han, Labange, Ludlow, Masekowsky, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Smith, Biagoso, Weiss, Zine, Padilla, ten members present and a quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. The council is now officially in session. Colleagues and listeners, if there's an objection, what I'd like to do is run through the agenda, dispense with consent items, and then return to our presentations. First order of business, please.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Parks moves. Mr. Zine, seconds.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Ludlow moves, and Mr. Cardenas, seconds.
Since there's a quorum of the council, do you wish to take public comments at this time?
Let's hold public comment as the first item to be considered after dispensing with consent items, please.
On the regular agenda, Items 1 through 15 are items for which public hearings have been held. There is no action necessary on Item 2, and as much as this item was inadvertently scheduled and will appear on next Wednesday's council agenda. On Item 7, 10 votes are required, and on Item 15, the recommendations differ. A motion will be required.
Okay, colleagues, on Items 1 through 15, we have had public hearings. A motion from the floor would be required to reopen the public hearings, and seeing no such motions, do we have any requests for specials? Mr. Weiss?
On Item 15, I would just move the Education and Neighborhoods report, so it's clear we're approving that one.
Okay, we have a motion, Item 15. No action required on Item 2, so we're considering Items 1 and 3 through 15. Any specials? Specials, going once, going twice. Mr. Clerk, let's open the roll on Items 1 and 3 through 15. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Those are approved. Next items, please.
Items 16 through 74 are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay, without objection, these items are before the City Council today. Colleagues, Items 16 through 74 have not had public hearings, and I do not have requests from members of the public to address the council on these items. Public hearings are open, public hearings are closed, and we are getting a last-minute card on Item 61, so we'll call Item 61 special. On the balance of the items, Mr. Clerk, before we open the roll, Mr. Parks.
Need special.
57 and 58 special by Mr. Parks. Any other specials? Mr. Cardenas.
Continuance on Item 22.
Request to continue Item 22 for how long?
Until April 2nd.
April 2nd?
Yes.
Any objection to continuing Item 22? Seeing none. Item 22 is continued. Ms. Gruel.
Item 72, please.
72, call special by Ms. Gruel. Any other specials? Seeing none. On the balance of the items, Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Those are approved. Items 16 through 20 are ordinances, and those carry over for a second reading. And if that's the end of our agenda, then let's return to presentations for today. Our next presentation will be by Councilmember Gruel.
Thank you, Mr. President. I am so pleased to be here to present a special proclamation. You know, we all hope that we will live forever and be able to live a healthy and happy life and to engage, and I have a special woman today who has been able to achieve a tremendous accomplishment. For those of you who don't know, I have Ada Mayer who is here with me today. She's the mother of Sharon Mayer, who many of you see running around in City Hall of the Planning Department. Ada celebrated her 90th birthday on March 8. She has an extremely active life. I've seen her at the Senior Center where, in my district, she takes classes, attends lectures, goes to the theater and concert, and plays bridge with friends. She's a transplant from Minneapolis, Minnesota, and she moved to California at the age of 15, just in time to attend Roosevelt High School in Boyle Heights. She didn't stop there. She attended and graduated UCLA, good choice, and went on to receive her master's degree from Berkeley. She worked as a social worker for Vista Del Mar for five years but left to start a wonderful family. She returned to her career after she raised her children and taught for LAUSD and then worked as a pupil services and attendance counselor. She enjoyed 40 years of a blissful marriage to her husband, Harold, who passed away in 1987. 1987. She enjoys spending time with her children, her grandchildren, and great-grandchildren. I'm inspired by Ada's energy and really zest for life. Ada, I hope that you continue, you will continue to enjoy your family and friends, you're an inspiration to all of us. Thank you so much for being here today and allowing us to share in your celebration. We have a wonderful proclamation here for you today that talks about your volunteering at the Jewish Family Services, you're active in the Valley University Women, you have just been an incredible person here in the city of Los Angeles and the San Fernando Valley, and we wanted to take this opportunity to congratulate you on your 90th birthday. I hope you'll all join me in congratulating Ada on her 90th birthday, March 8th.
Mr. Weiss?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. Ada, I just wanted to say briefly that I know Sharon and Rick quite well, they're very special people, so you must be one extraordinarily special person. Happy birthday to you, it's fun to have you here.
Well, this is a great surprise to me, and thank you all, especially Wendy.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President, I have one more presentation. Thank you, Ada. Councilmember Zine, would you join me at the podium, please? And I still have to call you Chief Kathy, so, and I don't know, okay, great. Well, this is one of those days that's, for the city of Los Angeles, we have kind of sad news. Someone who has been an extraordinary part of the city family that I had the pleasure of working with when I was with Tom Bradley. I want to give you a little bit of history and share this podium with my colleague, Councilmember Zine. Assistant Chief Kathy retired from the Los Angeles Fire Department on January 10th, 2004. He was appointed to the Fire Department on October 17th, 1970, and served the Los Angeles Fire Department for over 33 years. He served honorably as Division 1 and 2, excuse me, 1 and 3 Commander and Assistant Bureau Commander of the Bureau of Emergency Services. He served as the Community Liaison Officer and Department Spokesperson during the civil unrest and floods of 1992, the firestorms of 1993, the 1994 earthquake, and numerous major emergency incidents. He served admirably as the Coordinator and Liaison with the Federal Emergency Management Administration, the FBI, and the Multi-Agency Task Force of the Terrorism Early Warning Group. And now we're switching to Mr. Zine for a moment.
There's a lot of accomplishments, and we both wanted to acknowledge you, Chief. I served as Coordinator on Budgets and Apparatus Procurement for the Bureau of Emergency Services, served as the Committee Chairperson for the Hazmat Terrorism Working Group and Procurement of Equipment and Apparatus, served as the Coordinator for Air Ops and developed fire, helicopter training programs, also served the Fire Department commendably as the agency's representative during the largest and most devastating California wildfires in San Diego County, which were recent, and served our nation heroically in the United States Air Force as a crash rescue firefighter from 1966 to 1970. No, Chief, we did not make this up. We did a lot of research, and it's all accurate and all true, Wendy.
Thank you. And I think tonight is your retirement dinner, and I'm sure there'll be even better stories this evening. As I mentioned earlier, we're very sad to see Dean Kathy leave, and I met him when he was coordinating the March of Dimes efforts as the Fire Department, and those were the grand years where the March of Dimes and the Walk and everything in the Fire Department, and I know continues to support the March of Dimes. But not only was Dean Kathy an extraordinary firefighter, he was a humanitarian and someone who cared very deeply about the citizens of Los Angeles and the people. And just about a year ago, you came out to the valley to behead the valley operations, and I thought, great, we're gonna get to spend a lot of time, and he's such a wonderful individual and access to him as the chief in the Fire Department in the valley. And then I heard all too soon he decided to retire, but I know that you are going to enjoy retirement, but I wanted to say thank you for your service, your loyalty, and your dedication to the city of Los Angeles. It's been quite a pleasure to call you a friend and someone who's been committed to the city of Los Angeles. So, congratulations, and I know that Chief Bhamatri would like to say a few words as
Thank you, Councilman. It's a pleasure to be here, and honoring Dean is something that's easy to do. I kind of describe him as really the prototype for the Fire Chief of the future, the present and the future. As you saw from the accomplishments, there wasn't a task that he couldn't do and that he didn't perform and excel in, from operationally-related issues to community issues, whether it's the March of Dimes or new programs such as the Urban Search and Rescue. And Dean Kathy and his contribution to the department was really a progressive person that led our department to the leadership role that we have in the fire service, but also served the city. He was also one of the main people organizing the emergency operations over the years that it was in its key developmental stages, and I know he is not a stranger to any of you because he has worked in so many different departments as liaison for our department and in so many tasks across the city. So we take a great deal of pleasure in congratulating Dean on his retirement, and certainly his wife Leonira is here, and some of their friends are here, and it's gonna be a busy day for him as he shows them downtown in a whirlwind tour, but then ends up with his retirement dinner tonight. So congratulations, Dean, on behalf of the entire department, and there's a number of people here for you. Yeah, if I could have the command staff come on up, actually, if we get all our people in uniform to stand behind Dean here. Got Chief Hill, the Fire Marshal, Chief Dennis Keen, who is our Support Services. We've got behind him, Don Frazier, and get everybody, Andrew Fox, behind them, Al Hernandez, Emile Mack, Greg West, a whole bunch of people, so they're all here to express their appreciation for what Dean has done for the department and for them individually. Dean was the type of person that really gave of himself, both on a personal level and on a professional level. So, we're certainly gonna miss him, but I think he's put in well past his time of contribution, he deserves retirement, he's gonna enjoy it with his family, so we all share in that celebration and excitement.
Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Mr. President. I rise to support what Wendy had to say and Dennis about Dean Kathy. I have known Dean for over 20 years as the point person for Councilman Burnson with the LA City Fire Department, and Dean was one of those guys, no matter where he worked, whether it's Division 1, 3, Bureau, whatever, Dean was one of the guys I always relied upon for information, I always talked to on a regular basis, and he was a great fireman. He was in the middle of very important issues with the LA City Fire Department that transpired over the last 20 years, always very much in the middle of everything that was going on in this department, and helped lead it through some difficult times and some great times, and showed great leadership as a Fire Chief. I know you deserve retirement, I don't have to let you go willingly though, but I, because I don't want to see you go, Dean. More importantly, I just want to say to you, you've been a great representative of the LA City Fire Department, you've worn the bars and stripes, all very, with great pride and served so well this city, but more importantly, you've been a great personal friend, and I hate to see you go, Dean, because you're really, I could see you of a friend more than a colleague, and you're being greatly missed around here because you have great expertise, you've been a great spokesman for LA City Fire Department, and a great role model for all the firefighters coming up that'll take your place in years to come. So we hate to see you go, because you're a great person. Thanks so much for your service.
Thank you so much. President Padilla, councilmembers, Fire Department members, and other guests and family, this is truly an unexpected and great honor for me to be standing here in front of you today as a result of Wendy and Dennis's action, and I, I'm almost speechless, which is very unusual for me to be able to not speak. It has been an incredibly fascinating and enjoyable career for me. I revel in the things that I had an opportunity to do, the opportunities that both Chief Bhamatri and the former Chief Manning allowed me the space to accomplish. I'm extremely proud of having been a member of this department, and I carry that with me for the rest of my lifetime. I've enjoyed working particularly with this council, because I know a number of you, I've had opportunities to work with you on issues and that, and I'm just really beside myself to be here today and to receive this recognition. I can't thank you enough, and particularly Wendy and Dennis for initiating this for me. Thank you all. I'll try not to be a total stranger, I'll keep in touch with you as best I can.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Ms. Zine, Ms. Gruel. For our next presentation, we recognize Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I thank Mr. Weiss for allowing us to step in front of him for this presentation. I'd like to ask Aaron Stennis, Michael Jr., and Pilar to come up. Colleagues, you may recall several months ago, I made an adjournment motion regarding the death of Michael Stennis Sr., who I happen to coach in Pop Warner Football. Based on that tragic event of his death, early death due to colon cancer, his family, who are here today, have started a foundation, the Stennis Family Foundation, founded by Aaron and Michael in 2002, once Michael became aware that he had this disease. This foundation is set up specifically to heighten the awareness with the minority community on prevention and cure of colorectal cancer, and is designed to raise funds for prevention and cure. The Stennis Family Foundation goals are to provide education outreach to minority community where the majority of cases go undetected until the later stages of the disease. Also, it's there to identify the needs of early detection in order to decrease the number of colorectal cancer deaths in the minority community. We also have seen since this foundation has gone forward, a significant number of partners. The Stennis Family Foundation has partnerships with the Amoson Foundation, with the American Cancer Society, with the City of Refuge Church, St. James Episcopal Church and School, and also prominently as a partner is the USC Norris Cancer Center, the famed First AME Church of Los Angeles, along with our own Los Angeles City, our Central Library. They've also had a number of events to identify not only those that suffer from the disease, but also the family, the remaining members of the family that are coping with the loss of a loved one. And so, we're here today, in addition to a very unique partner, The Today Show is here filming this in behalf of Aaron's effort to create a partnership with The Today Show, and that we know that Katie Couric's husband passed away in his short life due to a very similar disease. It's our ability to bring forth and commend Aaron, Michael Jr., and Pilar for developing this foundation, and that we hope that as they move forward, it will continue to improve the quality of life for all communities, but particularly in those minority communities that seem not to have as much information and seem to be suffering from this disease more so than others. And I'd like to ask Aaron to come up at this time. In behalf of the Los Angeles City Council, we'd like to say thank you for what you're doing, and Michael looks just like Big Michael, and Pilar, thank you for being here. We'd just like to say keep up the good work.
I am a human being who knows my purpose, I know why I am here. Unfortunately, it took my husband's being diagnosed with colon cancer for me to have my wake-up call. But I know why I am on this earth, and that is to educate all, and especially the minority community, about colon cancer. I want to make the minority community aware that if you are tested, if you are screened, that this potentially deadly cancer is curable. Unfortunately, by the time my husband was diagnosed, he was stage four. And Michael was a fighter, for those of you who knew him. Although he was given a couple months, he fought relentlessly for two years, but his body and his spirit became tired. In October of last year, he lost his battle. He did not live his life in vain, and that is why we established the Stennis Family Foundation. So I will fulfill my purpose by trying to make everyone I know aware of the necessity to be screened, to know what the symptoms are, and to spread the word about colon cancer. Thank you, thank you, Councilman Parks, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Parks. For our next presentation, let me recognize Mr. Weiss. Is that a motion for reconsideration, Mr. Weiss?
Thank you very much, Mr. President, good morning. Colleagues, this is, this is a fun one for me. I'm joined here by UCLA Law Professor Eugene Volokh, his wife Leslie, and their baby Benjamin, and I'm here today to offer an unusual greeting to Eugene, who is a very old and dear friend of mine since high school and law school. Let me tell you a little bit about him. He's a constituent of mine, he's one of the most remarkable people who live in my district and probably in the city. He was born in 1968, that's accurate, isn't it? And in the mid-'70s, he immigrated with his family from the Soviet Union to Los Angeles in the era of the Refuseniks. They were fortunate finally and got out of Russia. And they came here, and even though he was much, much younger than all of us, he was in my high school class, at least he was there for just a year or two, because he got out of high school much more quickly than we did, he was much younger and much, much smarter. Then he went to UCLA for college, that only took another year or two, and so by the time he was 15, he had graduated from, I'll put a little asterisk on this business about him being 15, he had graduated from UCLA and with a degree in computer science and went on to create a software program for Hewlett-Packard that became an industry standard, and he became fabulously successful as a private entrepreneur. But Eugene didn't stop there. That wasn't really what he wanted to do, that wasn't fulfilling, so he went back to law school, ended up in my law school class coincidentally, and then had a couple fairly interesting jobs after law school. He clerked on the 9th Circuit for Judge Alex Kozinski, then he clerked on the United States Supreme Court for Justice Sandra Day O'Connor, a job which, in my view, is not only the most prestigious postgraduate position in our country, a clerkship on the United States Supreme Court, but I think is arguably the most prestigious one-year position in the country, period. Eugene then went back to law school at UCLA, where he was fast-tracked on the tenure track and is now a tenured professor of constitutional law. Why do I say all this? Because I'm very, very proud that just 12 days ago, 12 or 13 days ago, on February 29th, Eugene Volokh celebrated his ninth birthday. So who do you know who's accomplished all of that before they were nine? On behalf of the LA City Council, happy birthday Eugene Volokh.
Mr. Garcetti?
Thank you, Mr. President, I just wanted to add my birthday greetings, Mr. Volokh, somebody who's been able to collaborate with him here in the city of Los Angeles, a great legal scholar as well as a public policy voice here in the city. Eugene and I helped start a group called Saturday Morning Group, which I think Mr. Viagrosa in a previous incarnation did, but discussing public policy issues of the day. I'm really pleased that Jack has done this, and congratulations to all three of you.
Thank you very much. Thanks for this honor, thanks to Jack Weiss. Thanks to Jack Weiss, a great city councilman, what he omitted to say was he was my boss, the editor-in-chief of the UCLA Law Review, so great editor and great city councilman.
It's a child labor law violation, he was only
He was only six at the time.
And how much did you pay me? Nothing.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Mr. Carradines.
Move to reconsider the ordinances.
Okay. Members, we have a motion to reconsider the ordinances. Those are items 1, 16, 17, 18, 19, and 20 from today's agenda. We do have 12 members present. Let's open the roll in reconsideration, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Ordinances are reconsidered, and let's reopen the roll on those ordinances, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Okay. Those ordinances are approved now on first reading. And colleagues, before calling on Mr. Parks for our next presentation, we do have a special announcement for today, so I'll ask for your indulgence on a special recognition. But today's a special day in the sense that tomorrow is a very special day for one of our colleagues here. We heard the announcement live on Channel 35 just a few weeks ago. Tomorrow is the wedding day for Councilmember Martin Ludlow, and we have a special surprise for him here. Turn around, Martin. Turn around. Look at what your staff did for you. So please join us in congratulating Martin. I'm going to take the presidential privilege of kicking him out of the council meeting today, so he can tend to some wedding day preparation duties this afternoon with his family. But Martin, please accept this cake as a token of our friendship and congratulations, and we wish you all the best for you and your bride. Say a few words.
The only thing I'll say is that today, I'm actually more nervous than I was election night, so I'm not going to say anything else.
As it should be. As it should be. So staff will help us slice that cake and distribute it. Mr. Carradines.
Martin, let me tell you, as someone who has been happily married for 12 years, elections may come and go, but the love that you two have for each other is going to be forever, so you better believe you have a gazillion more reasons to be more nervous about being married and happy for the rest of your life than being elected to office, so rightfully so.
Can we see you cut that thing? You can take it to the back and cut it? Okay. Well, congratulations, Martin. And now, back to Mr. Parks for presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to ask Dr. Bill Burke to come up and also to be joined with Chief Pramatri from our Fire Chief. Basically, we're asking Dr. Burke to come up, and many of us saw over the last weekend, probably the most successful marathon in our city's history, that over 40,000 participants, over 23,000 runners, and 16,000 bike riders went through our city streets and brought a real positive outlook. We were the center of the world for those several hours. But we would like to honor Dr. Burke today for a number of things that he's done. Not only is he the founder and president of the city's marathon, the third-largest marathon in the world, but he's also an accomplished business leader and political leader in Southern California. He founded the American Healthcare Delivery Corporation in '72 and served as its president. He also has had a varied career in a variety of different businesses. But what I'd like to highlight is the number of civic things that he's done. He was appointed as our Commissioner of Tennis during the Summer Olympics of 1984, and that experience really is what drove him to begin to look at how could he develop a program to enrich this city and bring civic pride. And that was the forerunner for the Los Angeles Marathon, which he started 19 years ago. But he's also served as a Council General of the Republic of Mali for 15 years. He's been, he had two terms as president of both the State of California Fish and Game Commission and the Wildlife Conservation Board. He served as a representative, the Speaker of the Assembly, on the South Coast Air Quality Management District, an agency that covers the four regions of Los Angeles, Orange, San Bernardino, and Riverside Counties. He also has been, since his initial appointment, he has been selected or elected by his peers as two terms as Vice Chair, and is currently in his third term as a Chairman of the Board. He was appointed by Governor Davis in April 2000 to serve on the Board, a member of the State of California Air Resources Board. He also was appointed by Mayor Reardon to serve as a Fire Commissioner in 2002. He was also appointed to serve as the California Coastal Commission. He holds a variety of degrees, Bachelor's Degree in Science from Miami University, also a doctorate in education at the University of Massachusetts, honorary doctorates in law from Lane College and also Mount Ida College. And he's also received a number of distinctions. Probably one that he's most proud of is the Meritorious Service Award from the City of Los Angeles. He has done so much for the City of L.A., and one of his, probably his proudest achievements just happens to be married to Yvonne Burke, so that's one that should not go unnoticed. Jan Perry, what did you say? That's right. And he also has two wonderful daughters, Christine and Autumn. And so, we have him here today to say thank you for the marathon, your civic and political leadership in this city. And just a footnote, the marathon this weekend left $20 million of revenue in the City of Los Angeles. And so, I think it's that kind of achievement that we want to bring him here today, say thank you for all the things that you've done, and also, as a prior Fire Commissioner, Chief Pramatri has a certificate also for you.
Thank you very much, Councilman Parks. As Councilman Parks mentioned, Dr. Burke is extremely busy. He's a tremendous contributor to the city. One of the things, he sat on our Fire Commission Board, and when his term ran out, we've been trying for months to try to get him to come back so we could make a presentation, and that had a heck of a time tracking him down. But we got to interact with him quite a bit this weekend with the marathon. Despite all his accomplishments, he had very little control over the weather this weekend, and as many of you probably saw on TV, the temperatures created a lot of medical problems for the people in the marathon, and we were there working with Dr. Burke and his staff to address that. But on behalf of the Fire Department, we wanted to recognize his contribution as a Fire Commissioner, and like to present to him a plaque with our city seal and the crossed axes to stand among his many accolades and accomplishments, but something that we want to single out for his special contribution to our department. Thank you very much, Dr. Burke.
Mr. Villarrealosa.
I just wanted to join my voice with Councilmember Parks and Chief Pramatri and all the others, acknowledging Bill Burke this morning. One of the things we were talking about at the marathon the other day, when you think of the 40,000 people that were involved in that marathon, all the hopes and dreams of people, every individual who was accomplishing something, set a goal for themselves, defeating a demon, whatever it was, and you've been helping people do that for so many years now. And this is not just a great personal triumph in terms of the people that are involved in the marathon, but it's a great testament to you and your vision, because when you first started out, nobody thought this was going to be the world-class event that it turned out to be. And I could tell you, it's a great thing for L.A. that it is. Thank you.
Ms. Perry.
Dr. Burke, I also wanted to rise to give you some recognition, to tell you what a pleasure it was to participate. I was there. I did hear you call my name. There were so many cyclists there. I did the bike portion, and it was really just heartwarming to hear 15,000 people on bikes singing about loving Los Angeles. It was just wonderful, and I can tell you, the logistics were just splendid. It was just a real pleasure to be out there riding and to be able to see your friends along the route. Saw Monsignor Terry Fleming over at St. Brendan's and Don Garza over at Olympic and Western. And, you know, it's really nice to be able to be out there riding throughout the entire city and then waving at people that you actually know, and that's because of you and your vision. And so, I want to say thank you so much. It was wonderful.
Thank you.
Mr. Carradines.
I just want to say thank you, Bill, for all the work that you've done for decades. Round about the time I was running around on a playground, when we had to worry about air quality all too often, you were already making sure that communities like mine were being represented. And the reason why I bring that up is because whenever you try to do something, whenever you try to think outside the box, and you do, you get criticized. But here you are, continuing, here you are, continuing to be a voice, and here you are, doing many, many, many things to benefit the community, and once again, without controversy. And I think in some ways, that's a good thing, because the community where I come from, if you're not standing up for yourself, and you're not making noise, and not being criticized, and you're probably not doing much. So I just want to tell you, you know what I'm talking about, because you and I had some battles that we battled with each other against some other people who just didn't understand the practicality and the opportunities we had for environmental justice, for the people who unfortunately don't spend much time realizing or even thinking about the injustices that they endure on a daily basis. So I just want to say thank you very much for the will and the willingness to think outside the box and the willingness to stand and just push through that criticism, to do what you know is right and what you know isn't perfect, but certainly will make it a better place, a better environment for all of our children and for everyone. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Councilman. Thank you very much.
I just want to add my 20 seconds worth. It's all been said already, but Dr. Burke, you've done a tremendous job serving the city on the various commissions, obviously the Fire Commission. You do a wonderful job over at AQMD on some environmental issues, and when it comes to charities across the board, you're always there. You were there for me last year for the Children's Museum and our Capitol Campaign. I know you're there for me this year with the Diabetes Association Dinner coming up next week, so you're there every time we need you. It's much deserved. Congratulations.
It's my pleasure. It's absolutely my pleasure.
And before we hear from you, one last member, Councilmember Garcetti. Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I just wanted to thank you as well, Dr. Burke, for the great work that you did, and I want to embarrass my Deputy Beatrice Schuh, who finished the marathon. She was not the woman who won it, but she came very close, so congratulations, B.
We'll have her up front in the race next year, so she'll have a better shot. Mr. President, I just would like to say this morning, thank you not only to the Los Angeles City Council, who has been tremendously supportive to this event for 19 years, but also to the employees of the City of Los Angeles. The Fire Department was absolutely incredible at the race, as well as the Police Department. With all that heat, we still had 97.9% people finish. It was absolutely incredible. And I wanted to tell Councilman Ludlow not to worry about getting married. I know that it'll slow his time down on the bicycle tour a little bit for the first couple years, but you'll come back. Don't worry about it. Thank you again, all of you. I really appreciate it. Councilman Parks, you're great. Oh, that's beautiful. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Dr. Burke.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My final award today is also a group that has been in business for over 177 years, The Freedom Journal, and I'd like to ask Alfonso to come up at this time and his group of supporters that are here to be honored. And we have Alfonso Hamilton, who is the publisher of The Freedom Journal. And Alfonso, where are you? Come on up here. First of all, The Freedom Journal started on March 16th, 1827, in New York. It was started by Samuel Cornish and John Brown Russum. They started this journal as a publication was created to show the need to answer the attacks of anti-black publications in New York City that ridicule black people and defended slavery. It denounced slavery and advocated for the black people's political rights, the rights to votes. They spoke out against lynchings, sought to improve conditions for the more than 300,000 newly freed black men and women living in the North. The Freedom Journal also provided its readers with a regional, national, and international views of, with news that could serve them and entertain and educate them. Its emphasis on education, the object of the highest importance to the welfare of society, and they will endeavor to present just an adequate views of it, to urge upon the brother and necessity of training their children while young, the habits of the industry, and thus forming and becoming useful members of society. We are just fortunate to have this paper, this book, The 177 Years, and its publisher and a variety of its board members here in the City of Los Angeles. And we would, today, with the support of the City Council and all elected officials in the city, to declare that March 12th through March 14th is Freedom Journal Weekend in the City of Los Angeles, and we extend our best wishes and continued success. And I'd like to ask Alfonso to come up, and he's going to make some comments, but also, he's going to introduce the group that's here, so.
Thank you very much, leaders of the City of Angels. With great elation and humility, I stand before you as we celebrate the priceless gift, the freedom in the written word of this commemorative work of art, declaring and saluting our 177th birthday as the oldest African-American publication in the USA. And as we remember our co-founders, John Ressworm and Samuel Cornish, we all endeavor to try to make people everywhere mindful of the tremendous sacrifice and unselfish contributions that have been made for us to have the freedom to obtain, maintain, and retain our piece of the American dream. At this moment, I would also like to acknowledge that this is March, and it's Women's History Month. So I have to let you know who my bosses really are. Our contributing editors are Dr. Little, Dana King, Ellen Cooper, Cynthia Nettles, Tyona Rentson, and Terry King. And if you've been hearing the King, 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 the name King, 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 yeah, they're the daughters and granddaughters of the late, great Celeste King III. But as each council member has chief of staffs and various department heads, I couldn't, we couldn't make it without the real blood and guts of Freedom Journal today. I would like to acknowledge, I'll let them introduce themselves before we say the final words.
Wanda Wallace, Freedom Art Editor. Thank you.
Good morning, everyone. I am Mother Love. I am the Entertainment Editor at Freedom Journal.
Good morning. My name is Gail Jennings, and I am the International Editor.
Good morning. I'm Sharice Belloween. I'm the very proud Business Editor.
Good morning. My name is Pamela Cross, and I manage to stay coordinated because I am the Fashion Editor.
Hello, everyone. I'm Donna Shannon. I'm Freedom Science Editor.
Good morning, everyone. I'm Nina Womack, and I am the Society Editor. Thank you.
Good morning. I'm Valencia White, and I'm the Real Estate Editor.
We are very humbled and most appreciative to Councilman Parks and you good people to acknowledge us. We pray that we will serve the community another 177 years. And before we go, we would like to join with the City Council And before we go, we would like to join with the City Council with our last three Freedom hurrah's. So join us with us as we say, "Freedom! Freedom! Freedom!" Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Parks. For our next presentation, let me recognize Councilmember Garcetti.
Colleagues, members of the public, it gives me great joy today to welcome and to recognize members of our Congolese community here in Los Angeles. I double-checked, because I thought I was right with the number, but there are 10,000 members of our community that come from the Democratic Republic of Congo here in Los Angeles and are doing tremendous work here in the City of Los Angeles for residents that live here in LA. And in particular, wanted to honor Jules Boyele, who is not only the leader of the Congolese community here, but also graduate of the Council District 13's Leadership Training Institute, and somebody who has done tremendous work, not only in the Congo, but here in making sure that the community knows of all of the services, the rights, the responsibilities that exist here as residents of Los Angeles. And I wanted to speak a little bit about Jules this morning. He was born in the capital city of the Democratic Republic of Congo, Kinshasa. And for those of you who do not know Congo, Congo is the most populous African nation, one of the largest countries in the world, and one in which it has a very unique history, experienced some of the most brutal colonialism anywhere in Africa under Belgian colonialism, in which by the time that I think independence was reached, the Belgians had done so little to develop the human infrastructure. There were only a couple dozen graduates of universities at the time that independence came. The rubber trade and the history of the Belgians' exploitation of the people in Congo has been well documented, most recently in the great book, King Leopold's Ghost, which really looked at how brutal the Belgian government was and how little they did to bring Congo into the 20th century. But the people of Congo, who have an incredibly rich and proud history of many cultures, of many languages, have shown themselves to be capable not only of moving forward in the 20th century, but the 21st century. And throughout the world, the Congolese diaspora in positions of leadership economically, politically, and socially has time and time again proved themselves. Jules is the co-founder and he is the president of the Congolese Community of Southern California, which is a nonprofit corporation here, based in our city facility on Vermont, right south of the Los Angeles Community College. It assists Congolese, other African immigrants, and other minority groups to, again, whether it's through job training and social programs, to make sure that they have full access to the American dream here, just like everybody else. He's the grandson of the former governor of the state of Equator in Democratic Republic of Congo, also the son of a former diplomat and ambassador of the Democratic Republic of Congo in Geneva, Switzerland, of course, Belgium, Ivory Coast, and the Republic of Congo, as well as Burundi. He studied political science in Paris. He also studied acting and writing at NYU here in the United States. And oversees the Congolese community, which, as I mentioned, is a nonprofit, helps immigrants from throughout Africa, but also especially those who are Congolese here. They promote a number of things. First of all, education in African communities, business ownership to make sure that people are part of that 90% of new jobs that are created here by our small businesses, to empower the Congolese and African communities for a better Los Angeles, and to find a way to find employment, to be able to fight poverty and hunger and prevent violence and promote self-sufficiency. The community also helps Congolese and Africans to become legal in their political asylum. Many people escape the political violence and experiences in different parts of Africa. Many of us know and mourn, of course, the more than 5 million lives that have been lost in the Congo in recent years of fighting and unrest. And they help with different types of immigration petitions. They're also working on a great childcare program to help women in the community to be able to pursue their education, to get jobs, to enter the workforce, of course, while at the same time being able to make sure their children are looked after. And they're working with the Department of Aging here in the City of Los Angeles, which I think still exists today, to be more productive in American society. And works with the State Department on cross-cultural exchange and diplomatic efforts to promote peace in the Democratic Republic of Congo. And has worked, I know we all took a position on the International Criminal Court, they've worked closely here with the International Criminal Court Alliance to promote human rights in Congo, as I mentioned, the 5 million people who have died in Congo since 1998. And, you know, there's so many things that we talk about. We talk about the tragedy, for instance, in Spain, which 150 people were killed yesterday. But when you let that number sink in, of 5 million deaths, you see how often we turn our face away from the tragedies that exist throughout the world. The Congolese community and the work that Jules does with them, he does completely as a volunteer. He's not paid. All the work time and service that he provides, he does out of the love of people that he has and the love of the community that he has. And now he's working on creating a sister-city relationship between Los Angeles and the Congo with the capital city of Kinshasa, something that I know Councilmember Labanja, as our president of the Sister City Association, will be very proud to work with you too in. And then lastly, a couple last things. He's worked, and the community has worked in different middle schools here in Los Angeles to promote an art exchange between the children of Congo and the children here in Los Angeles, as well as Foundation for African Children Today, which is an international medical corps, and the Red Cross, to make sure that we have that cooperation between the United States and Congo for the medical needs of that country as well. And then lastly, he's joined the city family. And really, I'm so proud, because part of the reason we wanted to have the CD-13 Leadership Institute was to take great people like Jules, let them know about what exists here in Los Angeles, and move them into positions of authority and commissionerships, you know, real grassroots folks, and have them be a part of the life of Los Angeles. So he was elected on December 24th, Christmas Eve of this past year, to serve on the City of Los Angeles Community Action Board, our CAB, as our Poverty Sector Representative for SEPA III. He and his wife are raising their two children here in Los Angeles. And I know with him are many friends from the Congolese community, who, if you ever get a chance, you should go down and see the Congolese community at the Vermont Family and Services Center. I know we sometimes have celebrations. I got to do a little Congolese dancing when I was there myself, and I know that we have other council members who are itching to do the same thing. So on behalf of the city, I wanted to thank you, Jules, and the entire Congolese community of Southern California, and give you this certificate and recognition of your dedication, support, and ongoing commitment in providing educational, employment, and immigration services to the Congolese community, and really to the wider community here of Southern California. Congratulations, Jules, and I'd love to give the microphone to you for a few words as well.
We'd like to thank very much the Councilmember Garcetti for the acknowledgement. And he said almost everything what we do in Los Angeles, and we think is very important for us coming here, where there's a lot of dictatorship in Africa. We're still fighting to make sure there's a human right everywhere to be organized. What we do is not new. It's just noble that we need to stick together. We need to fight violence. We need to fight poverty. We need to make sure that immigrants, when they come here, especially when they're coming in under persecution of human rights, to make sure they're legal. But one thing we'd like to really tell you is, we don't feel good just running away, leaving our country. We have a country. So that's one of the reasons we do a lot of advocacy for human rights. And we'd like the city to join with us. Because we know one day, you like to go to Africa, but sometimes you're scared because there's no human right. It's a beautiful place to be, but sometimes you're scared because there's a civil war, people dying, there's a lot of anger. So it could be better. And we'd like the city to join with us, to assist us, to fight the human rights abuse in our country. We lost about 5 million people in our country since 98, just because some people, they want to make money, so they don't care about human rights. So we really want you to support us in what we do, because we think having a good country over there, you can go relax, just like we're coming here. And we'd like also to go over there, buy a house, you stay over there, have fun over there. We thank you very much, Councilmember Garcetti. I want to thank Marcella. Thank you very much for putting this together. And we thank the OCD. Hopefully we'll work together to make your world a better place. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, and we're happy to have had you here in City Council today. Thank you, Councilmember Garcetti.
Thank you.
I'd like to now call on Council President Alex Padilla for a presentation.
Members of the council, members of the public, this month of March, the City of Los Angeles recognizes American Red Cross Month, along with recognitions from municipalities and government around the country. As many of you know, the American Red Cross is one of our nation's oldest and most renowned charitable organizations. It provides help, provides hope, and it provides healing, especially in times of disasters and other crises that can strike a country, can strike cities, can strike communities and families around the world. It's an internationally recognized symbol, this Red Cross that I'm holding here in my hand, one that represents that help and that hope that people see when they need it the most. Founded in 1881 by Claro Barton, the American Red Cross was charged by the US Congress in 1905, and since then has responded to more than 67,000 disasters across our country. The Red Cross provides lifesaving skills, first aid, CPR, water safety, education courses, in addition to their emergency response services. And the backbone of the wonderful, wonderful contributions that the Red Cross provides is its tremendous base of volunteers. Of particular note, and of particular importance to us here in Los Angeles and in Southern California, is the Red Cross's contributions as it pertains to our country's blood supply. A good half of our nation's blood supply is made possible through the direct efforts of the American Red Cross. Here in Southern California, in the Los Angeles region, 70% of our blood supply is attributable to the American Red Cross. We must do better here in Southern California, folks. So as we recognize the American Red Cross and American Red Cross Month in the month of March, I think this is also a call to all Angelenos, all Californians, to do more by donating blood. It's a number that I memorized right after 9/11. 1-800-GIVE-LIFE. Schedule an appointment, come in. If there's a blood drive in your community, please participate. Your blood is needed here in the banks of Southern California, where we are forced to import blood from other parts of the country, because this is an incredible statistic. Only 2% of Southern Californians donate blood. Only 2% of Southern Californians take the step of donating blood. It's something that we need to increase, clearly. We never know who's going to need it. It could be a friend, it could be a neighbor, it could be a loved one, a family member. We never know when it's going to be us. We're just a car accident away, maybe even a sports injury away, from needing a blood supply in one of our hospitals. Here to tell us more about American Red Cross Month and their ongoing efforts are, let me introduce him, Cliff Neumark. He's the Director of Donor Recruitment here in the LA Chapter, along with H.T. Linky, the Chief Communications and Marketing Director. Gentlemen, would you please come forward and accept this resolution recognizing your efforts during American Red Cross Month 2004?
I am honored to be here on behalf of the American Red Cross of Greater Los Angeles. We're the second-largest Red Cross chapter in the nation. Last year, we were proud to serve the City of Los Angeles and its people. We provided help to 581 families as we responded to 478 disasters. Those disasters ranged everywhere, from the large Southern California wildfires in October, November, to the hundreds of single-family fires, the silent killers that turned families out into the street in the middle of the night. And it's the Red Cross that's there to help them. Those 581 families we helped last year, we provided a total of almost $1 million in direct financial assistance. We're also concerned with the health and safety. And last year, over a quarter million people received some sort of lifesaving education from the American Red Cross of Greater Los Angeles. It is our volunteers and our staff that help make that assistance possible. To continue, excuse me, to continue our work, frankly, our needs are simple. Besides donating blood, which is terribly important, we need the good citizens of Los Angeles to continue to volunteer their time to staff our operations and to support us financially. I would invite everyone to visit our website at ACROSSLA.org to learn more about how they can be involved, how you can help your community, how you can help the City of Los Angeles and the American Red Cross of Greater Los Angeles serve all of the people here. Thank you again for honoring our lifesaving work.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you for that, members of the Red Cross. You do a wonderful job. Thank you. You want to say something? Please, go ahead.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you, members of the council, Council President Padilla. After you're hearing your remarks, Council President Padilla, I think you should be the spokesperson for American Red Cross Blood Services here. It's true, Southern California has to import 40% of the blood that it distributes to Southern Californian patients. Every day, more than 1,000 people put out their arm and give, a part of them to save the lives of others, but it's not enough. So we are ardent in our mission to try to increase blood donations across the City of Los Angeles and throughout all of Southern California. And we especially, here's a blood donor card from the Council President. Here we go. We especially are trying to reach out to people of color, Latinos, African Americans and Asians. Latinos, the majority of Latinos have O blood, which is the most desired blood type. So that's why we are very appreciative of this proclamation today. We urge people, as the Council President said, to call 1-800-GIVE-LIFE, or go to www.socalredcross.org to schedule your appointment to give blood, to organize a blood drive, or to volunteer for blood drives. Thank you very much, council members.
Thank you very much. Yes, Mr. Garcetti, oh, sorry, yes, Mr. Garcetti. I saw Zine go up, but yes. Please, Mr. Garcetti.
Yes, thank you very much, Madam President. Thank you, Council President, for doing this. And Cliff, great to see you, and keep up the good work. I also had the great joy of meeting with Marsha Evans when she was here and having breakfast with her, and really trying to figure out how we can make sure we expand the volunteer base here in the City of Los Angeles. And Red Cross does an extraordinary job. I know as Chair of the Housing Committee, whenever we have dislocated tenants, when there's fires and other things like that, but when we want to make sure that some of our community groups, and now through our neighborhood councils, the diversity of Los Angeles, anything we can do to kind of establish a program to widen the kind of ethnic diversity of your volunteer base too, is something I'm very committed to working with you here locally on. So any way that I can be of assistance in making sure that we continue the great work that you've done and make sure that permeates every single one of these communities. Marsha and I had a great conversation and look forward to building on that strength. So thanks so much.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. I think we'll move to the first order of business, or I'm not sure, Mr. Padilla, if we'd like to go to public comment. Public comment. I think we're going to start with item number 61, or general comment. I'd like to first, members that are going to have a public comment, call the first three members here. I apologize for any mispronunciation. Edigeneus Rumbos, Jesus Macias, Valentin Diaz, and Nadine Diaz. I think probably we'll need a translator. Translation, please.
Señores. Un momento, por favor. Señores concejales.
Council people.
Este consejo.
This council.
Este de mensajes se lo dedicó al presidente municipal de Los Angeles.
This message is dedicated to the Municipal President of Los Angeles.
Por qué razones.
What are the reasons?
Lo están quitando unas tierras que estamos cultivadas.
They're cultivated.
Y quién la cultivó?
And who cultivated them?
Los campesinos.
The workers.
Por qué tienen vida todos los países del mundo.
Why do all the countries in the world have life?
Por los campesinos.
Because of the farm workers.
Qué tal si los campesinos.
What if, the farm workers.
Si pusieran en huelga, cuántos niños no se morirían de hambre.
How many children would die of starvation?
Ahora.
Now.
Andamos, no estamos que los reg... Si pusieran en huelga, cuántos niños no se morirían de hambre.
How many children would die of starvation?
Ahora.
Now.
Andamos, no estamos que regalar en esas tierras.
We don't need for --
Nada más que los dejen trabajarlas para sacar alimentación para los niños y todo la comunidad.
And the whole community.
Ahora.
Now.
Allí estamos ayudando mucho a personas que son bajo de recursos.
That are low income.
Por eso.
That's why.
Les suplico a los concejales y al presidente municipal de aquí de Los Angeles.
The President of here in Los Angeles.
Que le den la mano derecha.
To give us the right hand.
Y también.
And also.
Este mensaje se lo mando al presidente municipal y a los concejales.
The Municipal President and the council people.
Y espero.
And I hope.
Que el presidente municipal reciba este mensaje.
Receive this message.
Y que me mande por escrito a mi dirección.
And to send me and refer to my address.
Gracias.
Thank you.
Este es su nombre, por favor?
Su nombre? Su nombre?
Sí, tu nombre.
Edionius Liguiano.
Edionius Liguiano.
Muchas gracias. Next speaker, please.
Mi nombre es Valentin Diaz.
Valentin Diaz.
Estoy aquí.
I'm here.
Que represento a los campesinos.
I represent the farm workers.
De sus centros.
Jesús Centro.
Alameda y 41.
Alameda y 41.
Estoy aquí.
I'm here.
Para decirle a la señora Jan Perry.
John Perry, Ms. John Perry.
Ella dijo a la opinión.
She told the up.
Que ella ya nos tenía terrenos.
That she didn't have any more land, that she already had some land for us.
Y hasta la fecha, ahorita, no hemos tenido nada.
And up to now, we haven't had anything.
Nosotros conservamos el terreno, lo que el compañero dijo, y reitero.
What the coworker said, and I reiterate.
No estamos quitándoles nada.
We are not taking away nothing.
Lo único que queremos es.
The only thing that we want.
Terreno para trabajar.
Land to work.
No estamos para quitarle a nadie nada.
We're not here to take away anything from anyone.
Lo único que quiero es que reconozcan.
The only thing that I want is for you to recognize.
Que estamos aquí.
That we are here.
Y también, señora Jan Perry.
And also.
Yo voté por usted.
Ms. Jan Perry.
Haga algo por nosotros.
Do something for us.
No nos tire.
Don't throw us away.
Gracias.
Thank you.
Gracias. Jesús Macias, Nadine Diaz, Miguel Ángel Pérez.
Jesús Macias.
I'm Jesús Macias.
Sí, señor Miguel va a hablar por mí.
Mr. Miguel is going to talk for me.
Señor Miguel.
Don asked me to speak in his behalf. He's got a small cold. If anybody needs translation into Spanish, I'll do it, but it's very clear that you all know, as members of the City Council, city, Food Bank, Liba Horowitz, very, very personal situation and also public situation that is existing, the tragedy of this land situation. The campesinos, the workers of the land, speak to me, and to them, they trust that I will say the right words. It's very important for you to understand that this is a human issue, a world issue of food, a world issue of people's rights and dignity. And the question, the various members of the City Council proposing exchanging 3/4 of an acre of land to 13 to 14 acres for subsistence on a daily level for these workers and residents, is very clear statement that has to be made to the City Council and to the world. This is a world issue. Take this to heart, regardless of what the outcome of a case will be. We will still be here, and we will not leave. Thank you.
Nadine Diaz, Miguel Ángel Pérez, and Candy Domares.
Good morning. My name is Nadine Diaz. I live at 120 Chesbrough Lane, Los Angeles 90063. I am 41 years of age. I am Latina, Asian, American Indian, and I'm also a community leader and organizer. I am here to speak as a woman and to share with you for the record, I am appalled at the fact that the mayor is considering to appoint Mr. George Maguianis to the Affordable Housing Commission. I was sexually harassed on September 10th, 2002, in my home, my grandfather's home. My grandfather, Antonio Diaz, is home, and I have had to be silent for so long, and I am not going to be silent anymore.
Okay, ma'am, we can have either one of the council staffs or the city attorney sit with you and hear you out.
I don't need to be, I don't need to sit anymore. I do not need to be silent anymore. I need to speak out. I was sued because I filed a police report. I have the police report here for the record before all of this happened. He was a friend, his family was a friend, I considered them family. So it wasn't like I woke up one morning and decided to file a police report. I am a woman, and I am speaking on behalf of all people, women, men, children, who have been abused and violated and harassed. It is time to come to reality now and to protect people. And I'm sure in these walls of City Hall, there has been many, many forms of abuse. We are here, I am here, this is an issue about women, and I will not stand silent anymore. Since I have voiced my concern since Monday, my car has been vandalized, I have received threatening phone calls, and I'm not going to stop.
Thank you for being here, ma'am.
Miguel Ángel Pérez. Time to speak on that same issue. File number 04-0415, last change date 352004. Title, Mr. George Maguianis Jr., initiated by mayor. Subject, communication from the mayor relative to the confirmation of appointment of Mr. George Maguianis Jr. to the Affordable Housing Commission for the term ending June 30th, 2004, to fill the vacancy created by Guadalupe Hermitas, who was removed from this commission effective February 9th, Council District 14. Date received 342004, filed, file 34043504. Mayor's letter to honorable members of the City Council, care of city clerk, room 395, City Hall, March 5th. You all have this, okay? Very important to understand. Subject to your confirmation, I have today appointed Mr. George Maguianis Jr. to Affordable Housing Commission for the term ending June 30th, 2004, to fill the vacancy created by Guadalupe Hermitas, who was removed from the commission effective February 9th. I certify that, in my opinion, Mr. Maguianis is especially qualified for, by reason of training and experience with the work which shall devolve upon him, that I make the appointment solely in the interest of the city, very truly yours, James K. Han, Mayor. And then his qualifications. Also, I have a letter that I'm also a board member from the National Organization of Women. You all have a copy of that. The San Fernando Valley Northeast, Los Angeles Chapter, very, very clearly states, you all have that letter here. It's been faxed and emailed to you. The questions are raised. Maguianis brought this suit in pro per. Bullet point two, the suit was brought without regard to the privileged nature of communication to law, forced under Civil Code, Section 47. Third bullet, the court had to sanction Maguianis for failing to serve notice of a hearing. Bullet point four, the court granted the defendant's motion to dismiss the case under California Free Speech Act as a slap suit.
Sure.
Not, the organization is extremely concerned at the chilling effect that such suits have the ability of victims of abuse to report crimes. This is precisely why the Free Speech Act was passed in the first place. Very important you understand, everybody is subject to scrutiny, and anybody, anybody that enables these type of acts are guilty also, not only the eyes of the law, of the world court, but the barrio law. The law where I come from, the streets I walk, and the streets that Nadine, Ms. Nadine Diaz walks, and defends every day on a daily basis for justice, equality, and the democratic process.
Thank you, sir. We have one more speaker, Mr. Candy Domares.
Good morning, Mr. President, council members. I enjoy reading the daily news every day. I love to read the articles by Rick Arlov and Dennis McCarthy, and I even like reading their opinions. But they were wrong when they were, they went after the City Council for going to Washington. Don't they realize what federal dollars mean to this city? In our consolidated plan, we have 200, roughly over $200 million, but we have applications for over $300 million. That means we're short by $100 million. The fire department was here. I was talking to the chief, Montre. I asked him how important were federal dollars to the fire department. They're very important to our police department, to our housing. So I would ask the daily news to come back and join this family. We are one city, we are one people, and please, we need them, we enjoy them, but they need to come back into the family. Thank you.
Thank you very much. This concludes public comment for today's meeting. Mr. Reyes, did you wish to be recognized? No? Okay. Mr. Clark, next item, please.
Item 57 was called special by Councilmember Parks.
Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just asked these to be identified as special because we want to bring special attention to two very serious incidents that occurred in the 8th district that deal with the loss of life. Back in, set, March 9th of 2002, we had a young man that was merely standing in the 6200 block of 10th Avenue, waiting for pizza delivery, whereupon he was shot numerous times by unknown suspects with both an assault weapon and shotgun. And Mr. Riley succumbed to these injuries. And after consultation with the Los Angeles Police Department, we're moving forward for a reward motion in hopes that we can encourage the public to come out and to give us clues in order to solve this case. One more recently, March 1st, 2004, we had a armored guard in the neighborhood of 8700 Block Southwestern that was killed while making a delivery to the Bank of America. And there are at least six suspects that have been identified in this ambush homicide. And again, with support and consultation with the LAPD, we're going forward on a reward motion on this case. And we'd ask the general public, those who are listening to Channel 35 and are aware that a phone call to the LAPD on any information that would lead to the apprehension of suspects in the Tyrone David Riley case or the Evelio Suarez case would be much appreciated from not only the city, the police department, but the families of these two individuals that lost their lives prematurely. Thank you, Ms. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Parks. And I believe this is items 57 and 58 taken up concurrently. Mr. Varegosa?
I just wanted to make sure that 25 and 60 went forthwith.
Okay, we'll do that in just a second here. Other members wishing to be heard on 57 and 58? Seeing none, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Those are approved. Let's send those matters forthwith, along with the item 25 and 60. Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. I'd like to reconsider item 12.
Okay, let's open the roll and reconsideration, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Okay, item 12 back before us.
I'd like to continue that for two weeks, please.
Okay, request a two-week continuance. That would be March 26th. And without objection, item 12 is continued. Next item, please.
Item 61 was called special, and as much as there are cards from the public, and substitute motion 61A is in the process of being distributed.
Okay. Ms. Perry, did you wish to speak now or after?
Actually, maybe it will be helpful if I speak now. As the city attorney indicated, last Friday, I introduced a motion in council. It was a Rule 16 identifying funds to allow for the extension of the Emergency Homeless Shelter Program for the City of Los Angeles. Concerns were raised subsequent to that motion about the funding source, as it may have conflicted with the prior council actions having to do with the 30-year consolidated plan. In order to make a correction and address this concern, I am offering the substitute motion today that will provide the necessary funds to continue this critically needed program through June 2004, and request that the Budget and Finance Committee include in its 2004, 2005 deliberations funding for the balance of the year for the Los Angeles Homeless Service Authority Emergency Shelter Program. Just to give you some highlights, last year, we voted to extend the shelter program year round, and we provided some incredible positive results. 414,000 bed nights provided, a 100% utilization rate, more than 1,000 homeless people placed in transitional housing, 658 homeless people placed in permanent housing, 7,833 unduplicated homeless people engaged in case management services, 1,630 homeless people who received drug and alcohol counseling, and 1,356 homeless people who received mental health counseling. We are working very effectively with the County of Los Angeles and the federal government on the 10-year initiative to end homelessness in this region. Our social service providers have received a federal grant that will provide housing first with wraparound services for chronically homeless individuals. I think we're moving in the right direction, and I ask that we, as a city council, continue to affirm this critically needed program so that we can continue to work on addressing the issue of a permanent funding source to meet the need of homeless services in our upcoming budget negotiations, and I hope that we have an aye vote today. Thank you.
Let's then hear from members of the public, and they will return to council discussion if you feel so it's necessary to be heard. Mr. John Horn, followed by Cindy Aranda Lachuga, Bilal Ali, Becky Dennison, and Mitchell Netburn. Please come forward at this time, and if you would form a line behind the podium, that would expedite our public hearing. We were at 8 o'clock. Go ahead.
Good morning. My name is John Horn. I'm the Director of Programs for LA Family Housing, and I'm here to offer my support for the year-round shelter program, and the thanks to Councilmembers Garcetti and Councilmember Perry for their ability to champion this, that we operate a year-round program in SPA 2, and every night, we shelter 125 people. That's the winter shelter program. We will be operating 150-bed year-round shelter program, and we know those beds will be filled each night. And that we will be offering case management supportive services to the individuals in this program, and helping these individuals move from homelessness to housing. And this program is unique, because most cities do not offer a program of this nature. And for the City of Los Angeles to offer this and provide homeless individuals with a place to stay on a nightly basis is special. And I just want to acknowledge the fact that we thank you as the people who work with the homeless, who advocate for the homeless. We appreciate that, and that we look forward to this program continuing past June 15th to be a continuous program, because it will make a difference, and people will get off the streets. We've seen it happen, we see it happen every day, and that if this continues, the City of Los Angeles will become a place where homeless people do get a chance to succeed. Thank you.
My name is Cindy Aranda Lachuga, and I also work for LA Family Housing. And my position there is the Project Director for Valley Shelter. Part of my responsibility with the winter shelter program that has been in operation is managing the case management services. And I have to tell you, the winter shelter program is like a carrot for us to be able to engage clients and get them enrolled in receiving case management, helping them to rebuild their lives and transitioning them into transitional shelters and permanent housing. So I really, really, really encourage that this program not only continue up until the 15th of June, but indefinitely if possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Do the other speakers wish to be heard? Bilal Ali, Becky Dennison, and Mitchell Netburn. I'd ask you to please come forward at this time and form a line behind the podium.
Yes, my name is Bilal Mahamad Ali. I'm the, I'm a resident, and I work in the central city area. I'd like to acknowledge Ms. Perry for her commitment to the homeless issue. As a member of the community and working in the community, this is a much-needed service, much-needed funding, and I would like to request from the City Council to identify permanent funding for such services as such, not only for a few months out of the year, but the whole year round, as long as people need those services. Thank you.
My name is Becky Dennison. I also work in the downtown area and live in the City of Los Angeles. I also would really like to encourage you to vote. I also would really like to encourage you to vote for this extended funding and really to identify permanent source of funding for this program. Emergency services are really crucial, both in our community and citywide, and it's really difficult for providers and people utilizing these services to always sort of be in this state of flux, wondering when the program's going to end. And so I appreciate Ms. Perry's commitment to identify funds for now, and I would urge all of you to try to, to secure some ongoing funding for this program. It's critically needed in our community. Thank you.
Good morning. Mitchell Netburn, the Executive Director of the Los Angeles Homeless Services Authority. I want to thank the council for its continuing unequivocal support for homeless programs, particularly the continuation of the winter shelter program to a year-round program, and the leadership of councilmembers Perry, Gruel, and Garcetti on this issue, along with the mayor's office. Needless to say, we're thrilled about this extension and look forward to working with you to continue it beyond June 30th. The only two additional points I want to make, which is not clear from the motion, is the motion allocates approximately $700,000 for this program. The total cost to continue it through June 30th is actually $1.55 million. And in agreement with city, what we've agreed to do in effect is use the allocation for next year's winter shelter for this period now while the city identifies funds. The only concern with that is that if we don't have those funds returned, we will not have a winter shelter next year. So we do have the support and commitment from the city to identify those funds, but needless to say, it's, there's a little bit of a concern. The other, while the funds will be available on paper, given that the new fiscal year starts April 1st for these types of funds, there's always concern with cash flow, and many of these agencies can't operate without the timely payment. So we may need to come back to the council, ask for a bridge loan if there's any delays in the actual cash flowing. But again, thank you very much.
Thank you. And we've received two additional speaker cards from Jeff Morris and Brenda Wilson. Okay. Mr. Morris.
Yes, good morning. I would like to say that I am a guest and a volunteer at the LA Shelter New Image Emergency Homeless Shelter. I've been there for six months, and I have seen a lot of positive potential for improvement. A lot of great things are happening. A lot of great people are being helped and getting the assistance they need. I fully support them and ask that if City Hall can do anything to help us in this matter, many people would appreciate this. Thank you.
Brenda Wilson, Executive Director of New Image Emergency Shelter. Good morning to you, councilmembers. Well, to be honest, every one of them want to speak, but I didn't do that to you today. A good ad. Can you stand up, New Image client? I want you to know, we had two busloads out of 365 people that wanted to come. So we were kind, so you owe me. So you got to approve this today, don't they? All right, all right. Okay, okay, okay. Now, let me just say, along with the other agencies that are here that are winter shelter providers, believe me, and I'm sure you all know, we work very, very hard in securing jobs and affordable housing. So your funds will allow us to continue to do that and to continue to work with those that are in training programs that would be on the streets had it not been for this funding, also to help us to get them into jobs. So I thank every one of you, and I know there would be an approval, and thank you. Oh, and last is great.
Thank you very much for being here.
Excuse me. I did turn in a speaker card, and I think that it has been misplaced. I'd like the opportunity to speak. My name is Danielle Noble. I work for SRR Housing Corporation. Thank you for allowing me to speak. SRR Housing Corporation is a provider of, would be a provider of the new year-round shelter program. We are located in Spa 4, Central City East. Through this new program, we'd be able to accommodate 100 homeless people in private, secure, and fully accessible single-room accommodations. We have been providing emergency shelter to homeless persons since 1990. Participants in this new program would receive comprehensive services, including hot meals, transportation, identification assistance, and case management services. We are convinced that the quality of our housing and the opportunity to provide services through this year-round program would make a difference in helping homeless people to reestablish stability. Please support the motion in front of you and fully consider homeless services in the '04-'05 budget. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And this will conclude public comment for this item. Okay, Mr. Garcetti?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Thank you to everybody who's come out here today to speak with one voice about the importance of extending this. And I want to thank my colleague, Councilmember Jan Perry, who's been unyielding. It's been a great partnership with Wendy Gruel, with her, the work that my office has done to make sure that we took that historic step last year of going, I mean, it's a three-step process. We went from going from cold weather, wet weather, which I know when she worked here for the mayor, Councilmember Wendy Gruel helped establish. We've made that permanent year-round. Our third step will be finding a permanent source of funding for it, but this is a good second step again. It will take, in a budget years like this, a couple of these steps to make sure that we have this year-round. And I hope you can stick around, too, for the next item, which is about Section 8 vouchers, because what we're looking at as well, the importance of making sure that we don't add to our homeless population, and so many folks who have the opportunity to walk around this city with a Section 8 voucher, looking for that step out of homelessness into apartments, we are facing cutbacks that'll throw thousands, literally thousands, of households and individuals who are on the brink of getting housing for the first time, or for the first time in a long time, back on the streets, and that is unjust. We have to make the commitment here, not just to planning for the 10-year end of homelessness, but implementing it as we go along, figuring out what that budget number is. You know, I was talking with an advocate the other day, and they said, "It's great, this plan that we're putting together, but the most important thing we can do is put a dollar amount on it." Not just to say, "These are things we need to do," because most of us know the things we need to do. We need to have more shelters. We need to have more services. We need to have the cooperation of different levels of government. But put that dollar amount so that we can quantify and say, "To end homelessness in Los Angeles, it's going to cost us X million, X billion dollars." And then we have a goal that we can go after, just as we did with the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. We said $100 million will get us towards building affordable housing in the city. We're not there yet, but we're building towards it, and we know that that's the number. We have to do the same thing for homelessness. And your leadership, Councilmember Perry, I want to thank Bishu in my office for her work in making sure that we found a funding source this year. But we will end homelessness in this county. We will end it because we will quantify it, and we will find out the number that we need, and all of us, not just here. This is going to be the tip of the iceberg, because we're going to have thousands of people show up and say, "This is what we demand in order for it to be something of the past, not something of the present, and certainly not something of the future." So thank you. Of course, you have my full support today, and we will make this permanent once it comes to June. We will make sure that it's permanent year-round. You have that commitment from us, even in a difficult budget year like this. And thanks again to Councilmembers Perry and Gruel.
Ms. Perry?
Let's call the question.
I have Ms. Gruel and Mr. Vieragosa waiting to be heard. Ms. Gruel.
Jan, I, because I think we are ready to support this today, and thank you, Mr. Garcetti, as well. And I have told that story many times about the fact that we created the Cold/Wet Weather Program when I worked for Mayor Bradley, and it always seemed a little odd. It was, it was the first step, as we mentioned, but you had to determine whether it was 40 degrees and whether it was raining, and whether there was a 40% or 50% chance of raining. Well, if you're homeless, it's just cold. Doesn't matter what, if it's 39 degrees, or 40 degrees, or 41 degrees. And it doesn't matter if there's a 60% chance of rain. Sometimes it just rains when we don't know, even though the weather, people try to tell us that it's not going to rain or it will. But it's about providing shelter for the homeless. This is a huge step forward, and we did make this, I think, commitment last year. We challenged the county to come on board with us, and in fact, they did come through. And the providers who are here, I want to say thank you, because the providers have done an excellent job, day in, day out, providing this service. And I want to just take a moment to acknowledge your hard work. And when you see the numbers, colleagues, of the many individuals who went through this program last year and their movement into the levels we are interested in, which is transitional and permanent housing, you see that this program is not just about shelter overnight. It's about getting people back into permanent housing in the City of Los Angeles. And so I want you all to know, those of you that are residents today, those of you that are providers, that you have a committed council, and we're going to continue to provide that kind of support to ensure that no one is homeless in the City of Los Angeles. And working with LASSA, we're doing a 10-year plan to end homelessness. It's not right that people don't have a place to stay, and we're committed to make sure you do have a roof over your head, a place to go, and the services you need. So I support it wholeheartedly today. Thank you.
Thank you. I have Mr. Vieragosa, followed by Mr. Reyes and Mr. Cardenas, and Ms. Zine.
Garcetti, for their work on this issue. There it is. Leadership on this issue is very important and critical, and as was said by a number of my colleagues, we're looking at, the Blue Ribbon Committee is looking at this issue as we speak. But one of the things that, just like this, took resources. It took the resources and the commitment. If we are going to end homelessness, as we've promised and as we've articulated in a number of, on a number of occasions, we're going to have to ultimately bite the bullet and find those resources, because that's frankly the only way that we're ever going to solve this problem. So I look forward to working with all of our colleagues, not only here, but at the county, and making sure that we do resolve this bigger issue. This is a good step, but only a very small step down that road.
Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. Colleagues, I stand in support of this, more now than ever, coming back from Washington, DC, looking at our issues of Section 8 housing, and looking at what the federal government is doing in essentially tearing big holes within that net that supports many of the folks who are a step away from conditions that are essentially unconscionable. So the more we're able to secure this net, the more we're able to mend it, the stronger we'll be as a city and address some very basic human needs. For that reason alone, we have to start thinking about what are going to be net results of our ability to provide this critical service, but also start thinking about what happens to all those families who are about to be put out in the street because of the breakdown of the Section 8 program, and where are they going to go? So if we don't have these kinds of support systems, then truly our quality of life will continue to deteriorate, and more than, than anything will be the family and children will continue to suffer. For those reasons, I stand in support of this important program. Thank you.
Mr. Cardenas.
I'd like to commend and thank Councilwoman Perry for the leadership on this issue. And I think that this is a perfect example where the rubber meets the road of what kind of country we are, because when you say "country," then you might think in your mind coast-to-coast, millions of people, et cetera, but this is where the rubber meets the road. This is where individuals' lives are affected. And I think this is the kind of program where you take a situation, and someone is in need, and someone needs support. That's the kind of thing that this country talks about around the world that we support, where if people are willing to pull themselves up by their own bootstraps, if people are saying, "Look, all I need is some help, but not only help me eat, not only help me get shelter, but help me be the person that I want to become." That's what this program is about. The example that you set, when you say, "You know what? At one time, I was in that situation, and now I'm in this situation." And what happened in between is somebody stepped up and said, "I'm going to help you. I'm going to help you get to where you want to be." Not where we think you ought to be, where you want to be. To me, that's fulfilling dreams. That's fulfilling capacity. That's fulfilling what we're here to be doing, to just continue to grow and to do what we know we want to do, and to have a job, and to feed our children. That's what this program means to me. So to me, this is the American dream happening in this program. This is the American dream. This is the America where we say, "We do not forget people. We do not leave people behind." To me, that's what this is about. So it's unfortunate that right now, we can only say, "Well, let's continue this through June 15th of 2004." Hopefully, and hopefully anybody who can help us figure out how we can get the resources to make sure that we make this permanent, so that we don't have to fight month at a time, a year at a time, to make sure that we continue this program, because there will always be homeless. There will always be challenges. There will always be poor people, and there will always be rich people. And this city needs to continue to figure out a way to make sure that we keep this program going. So thank you very much, Ms. Perry, for taking the lead on this. Thank you.
Ms. Zine.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, and good afternoon to those of you who've come down to visit with us. And here are the five minutes after 12 today. I was in the nation's capital with a number of my colleagues and saw homeless that were over the shelters, the heat that comes up from the subway system, with a blanket and 40-degree temperature. And thinking of the nation's capital, where we have the laws of this country established, created, to have homeless people in the nation's capital on 40-degree temperature was a very sad sight. I see that same situation here in Los Angeles, and I know what happens in the 9th district. I know what happens in many districts around the city where homeless people with families have no place to go. And this council oftentimes talks about affordable housing, and affordable housing to a homeless person is not reachable. Affordable housing in this city is very expensive at the affordable level, and the homeless population, my heart goes out to. You're trying to come around, you're trying to make a difference, you're trying to become part of what this American dream is about. I see one lady here with a security officer uniform. I don't know if you were homeless, and now you've transitioned into employment, but there's a whole system that has to work together to help everyone. And if it doesn't work together, if all the components don't work, then it fails. And I know this city doesn't have the temperatures of some parts of this country, where there's snow, 40-degree, 20-degree temperature, but to see homeless people and families and children that don't have a place to live, don't have a roof over their head, don't have food, and have to wait in lines for the handouts, that's not the human thing. That's not being humanitarian. That's not being compassionate. So I support my colleagues that brought this forward. I know that we seem to reach this point every couple of years, where the funds run out, and then we throw in a few more dollars, and the funds run out. But we need to have some stability in this. We need to take care of this on a continuing basis and get people into the workplace, get them what the American dream is about, a roof over your head, clothes on your back, and an opportunity to enjoy the wonderful opportunities that many of us enjoy, and many of us take for granted everything today. God bless you, and thank you for being here.
Thank you, Ms. Zine. Other members wishing to be heard on this item? Seeing none, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item 72 was called special by Councilmember Gruel.
Ms. Gruel, item 72.
Thank you. I'd like to, actually, maybe Mr. Garcetti, who was the originator of the motion, can go first. You sure? Okay. You were, I had called it special before you arrived, so I know that you were very much interested in this. This item today, colleagues, you may have read about in the paper a couple of times, which is about individuals who were on the Section 8 waiting list, had actually received vouchers, and were searching for housing. And because of a determination by HUD, those 1,500 families will not be able to utilize those Section 8 vouchers. If you also know, we have a list of 84,000 people on the waiting list for Section 8 vouchers in the City of Los Angeles. And these vouchers provide housing for our working families, who, we can help them become self-sufficient. We believe that these vouchers are particularly painful because individuals have been waiting a very long time to get them. They finally achieved the ability to have a Section 8 voucher, and now they'll be taken away from them. So last week, and I know my colleague, Councilmember Garcetti, has similarly been talking to officials at HUD. I spoke to the Assistant Secretary for Intergovernmental and the Chief of Staff for the Secretary of Housing and Urban Development, and told them how important it was for them to fix this problem. And so what we're asking today is that we have some clarification in any legislation that will ensure that we are able to that will ensure that we are able to keep these Section 8s, that individuals who have received the Section 8 vouchers are able to utilize them here in the city of Los Angeles. So, I'd ask all of you for an aye vote. This is something that we are going to have to deal with in the future, because we anticipate next year's funding to not be at the same level we have now. And we all know the importance of this and the fact that we have a housing crisis in the city of Los Angeles. And as Mr. Garcetti mentioned, just before this, we were talking about individuals who were homeless, many of which who also would be able to benefit from the Section 8 housing. So, we ask for your aye vote today. Thank you.
Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, and thank you, Ms. Gruel, for your leadership on this issue, too. It's wonderful having somebody who served in the Department of Housing and Urban Development, who's able to advocate on behalf of the entire city. Colleagues, this isn't just an issue of homelessness, but it is one that impacts homelessness. We have 250,000 people every year who spend the night outside of a home. It's equivalent of one of every 15 Angelinos, equivalent of one of our entire populations of our council districts. Imagine if one of us just represented the homeless population. It gives you an idea of the scope of the problem that we're facing. And while we try to add resources and some tools to this, we are starving out here. To not only not be able to add resources from the federal government, but to have those be cut would be a travesty. When we look at the families that would be hit by this, we have not only 1,500 families who are out there, or individuals, households, with vouchers, looking for a place right now. And we've done a great job, our housing authority, and working with many of our landlords, of actually getting a much, much higher percentage of people who have vouchers into housing. But we also have, as proposed under the Bush administration's cuts for this next year of $1 billion of Section 8 across the board, an additional 3,600 people in housing today who would be kicked out onto the streets. 3,600 more households, so you're looking at, you know, close to probably 10,000 people who would lose housing if these proposals go through. So, we have to do two things today, and this resolution would do that. It would fight against the cap in the vouchers that has been imposed on us after Washington has said, "Get these out there, help people get housing, go for it." Suddenly to have a cap, sorry, those people actually can't find a place to live. We have to fight that. But secondly, we have to fight the cuts of next year. Because people in Washington, we were just there this week, need to know that this is a human issue. This isn't about numbers. This isn't about regulations. This is about flesh and blood. This is about people. This is about families. This is about making sure the fight that we are fighting here, to make sure that everybody has a decent and safe place to live, is not taken away from us. And we are not a city, I would say to Washington, that is coming to you hat in hand, saying, "Please, please help us." We have stepped up and put our money where our mouths is, in a historic way. The mayor and the city council has added more money to housing than we have seen in this city in decades, probably since the World War II, veterans camped out in MacArthur Park just after the war and demanded that we give housing to those who fought and died for this country. But for those people that are here today, many of whom are veterans, and those people who are out there who are working poor, who are balancing sometimes two and three jobs, we should have a federal government that recognizes what we've done here locally and step up, and not only match where they're at, but expand it. But today, we say, "No cuts, not here in Los Angeles, no way, and Washington, DC, you must be our partner. Do not throw families out on the streets of Los Angeles. That is inhumane, and we will not stand for it." Your vote today will stand against that. Thank you, colleagues.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. Other members wishing to be heard on this item? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
That is approved. Ms. Perry.
Yes, Mr. President, I just want to make a motion of reconsideration on item 37, because I have to put in a substitute motion. It's just a technical issue.
Okay, please open the roll on reconsideration. Please close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
The item is now back before us, and that substitute motion has been circulated. Did you wish to speak on it?
Yes, it has been circulated. No, no, no need to speak.
Okay, there's no further discussion. Let's reopen the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
That substitute motion is approved.
Thank you.
Next item.
Special one has been introduced by Councilmember Parks, seconded by Councilmember Zine, and the city attorney will speak to the findings.
Okay, we have a special one before us. Anybody wishing to be heard on the findings? Seeing none, let's open the roll on the findings. Mr. City Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll recite the facts as presented to me by the maker of the motion for the council's consideration of the adequacy of the findings. Since the posting of today's agenda, the police department has requested Council District 8 to offer a reward for information leading to the conviction of the suspect who murdered Dwayne Trotter. The police have exhausted all leads, and the suspect is considered to be a threat to the community. Council must first make findings pursuant to Government Code Section 54954.2 before considering the substantive motion.
Members on the findings? If not, let's open the roll on the findings, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
On the motion itself? Seeing no members wishing to be heard, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Special one is approved. Forthwith, please. Next item.
Council has motions for posting and referral.
Motion shall be posted and referred.
There are excuses on the desk. Councilmember Perry requests to be excused to leave at 11:00 AM on Wednesday, March 17th, and to be excused for Council Wednesday, March 31st, both for city business and both meet council policy.
Okay, those excuses are granted.
Councilmember Cardenas requests to be excused on Wednesday, March 31st for personal business, meets council policy.
Mr. Cardenas is excused.
Councilmember Lalo requests to be excused on Tuesday, March 16th, Wednesday, March 17th, and Friday, March 19th for personal business. Motion is required.
You or me, Antonio? Mr. Lalo is excused.
Councilmember Padilla requests to be excused to leave at 11:45 on Tuesday, March 16th for personal business, and for Friday, April 2nd for city business, both meet council policy.
That excuse is granted.
Councilmember Weiss requests to be excused to leave at 11:45 on Tuesday, March 16th for city business, and to arrive at 11:00 AM on Wednesday, March 24th for personal business, both meet council policy.
Mr. Weiss is excused.
That clears the desk, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Colleagues, this is the end of our agenda. Do we have any announcements today? Any announcements, Mr. Reyes?
Yes, I have. Well, one is, I want to take the opportunity to thank the community and all their support. Yesterday, we had a grand announcement that we've been able to install cameras in MacArthur Park. It's a series of steps that we're taking to bring that park back to the family and the children of that area. We have cleaned it up, we've got new landscaping. Department of Wrecking Parks has been doing a tremendous job, along with the Park Advisory Board. And my hat goes off to Chief Bratton. He has brought a focus that has not been seen in decades to that park. The work of the mayor's office, Mayor Hahn, in helping us out, it's a tremendous, tremendous accomplishment. Crime has gone down 50%. With these cameras, we can essentially identify those who come and buy drugs, come and buy legal documents. We have officers on bike patrol, they'll get to that point of transaction on the spot, such as what announced to everyone in the city. If you come to MacArthur Park to conduct yourself in a manner in which you're buying illegal products, illegal drugs, illegal documents, you will get arrested. We are watching, and let's preserve the space for our family and children. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Good job over there. Other announcements? Mr. Garcetti?
Thank you, Mr. President. Tomorrow, I know Mr. Reyes will be hosting us. I think Mr. Vierigosa is coming, to a couple other officials, to our annual Dodgers Job Fair, Dodger Stadium. It's a great place where literally, I think hundreds of employers are going to be there. I think Councilmember Perry is going to be there as well. We have a great lineup, but more importantly, for folks who are searching for jobs, it's a great place to come, have all the employers gathered in one place together, and to look for employment, either new employment or to change a job you have. Secondly, White House Primary Center, which is over at First in Vermont, will be unveiling our Neighborhood Matching Funds mural there tomorrow at 10:00 AM. So, folks who would like to come to that, that's at 10:00 AM tomorrow. The Dodgers Job Fair starts at 9:00 AM tomorrow, and will go throughout most of the day. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. Other final announcements? Final announcements? If not, if I could ask everybody to please rise for adjourned motions. Colleagues, I believe this is a unanimous tribute, as we adjourn in memory of Helen Misakowski, mother of our colleague and friend Cindy Misakowski. Helen Misakowski passed away on March 7th, 2004, at the age of 78, from heart failure at St. John's Regional Medical Center in Oxnard. Mrs. Misakowski was born November 29th, 1925, in Toledo, Ohio, and had been in Ventura County as a resident for more than 44 years, arriving from Grose Island, Michigan. She was a homemaker and a member of the Veterans of Foreign Wars Ladies Auxiliary, Post 35, and the Fleet Reserve Ladies Auxiliary Branch 120, and she will be very, very much missed. Mr. Vierigosa.
Mr. President, I'd like to adjourn in the memory of my wife's aunt, Tia Cuca. She was born in Oaxaca, Mexico, Jalisco, on July 28th, 1926, to Francisco Rigoza and Victoria Bonilla. She had four brothers, Jesus, Miguel, Luis, and Salvador, and two sisters, my mother-in-law Natalie and Victoria. She married Rosendo Quesada on October 2nd, 1946. Fifty-eight years of marriage. Cuca had 11 children, Victor, Manuel, Ofelia, who died in infancy, Teresa de Jesus, Francisco Javier, Maria Elena, Evangelina, Celia, Carolina, Berta, Alicia, Rosendo Jr., and Natsia. And from those children, she has 23 grandchildren and one great-grandchild. And I can tell you that in many ways, a woman of great accomplishment, when you look at the wonderful family that she was able to raise, the commitment to family and family values, it was always such a big and important part of her life. She had a church full of people at her wake, and another church full of people at her funeral. A great testament to a great woman and a great life. I'd also like to adjourn in the memory of Tichi Wilkerson Casell. Many of you know her as Arthur Casell's wife. She was raised in Mexico City. She returned to Los Angeles as a teenager. She married Billy Wilkerson, founder of The Hollywood Reporter, in 1947. She was 19 years old at the time. Tichi took over as second editor and publisher in 1962, after her husband passed away. And despite a lack of formal education, she was a very, very savvy businesswoman. As editor, she increased circulation greatly and the influence of the paper spread. She founded the Wilkerson Foundation that encouraged young people to enter the entertainment field. And in 2002, she founded the Tichi Wilkerson Casell Foundation to raise money for research on Parkinson's disease. She is survived by her husband, a great man and friend of all of us, Arthur Casell, her sister Gloria O'Connor, two children from her marriage to Mr. Wilkerson Cynthia, as well as an agent, and William, a songwriter, and three grandchildren.
All members. Mr. Garcetti.
Just very briefly on that, just wanted to say that our thoughts and sympathies are with Arthur today. Tichi was a wonderful woman who gave of her heart, and I think inspired really a lot of arts work in this city, supporting our public safety, officials and officers, fire police, our military, men and women. And she really set the standard, and I think, I know it's a great, great loss to Arthur, and our thoughts are with him today.
Other tributes? Mr. Parks.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to ask that we adjourn in honor of Amelia Pedro Serrano, who is the grandmother of one of my staff members, Eduardo Serrano Uwet. She was born in Philippines on January 5th, 1917, arrived in Los Angeles in 1932 at the age of 15. She graduated from San Fernando High School, and upon graduation, worked in the flower, tomato, and egg ranches of San Fernando Valley. She passed away Sunday, March 7th, age of 87. She leaves five children and a variety of grandchildren and 11 great-grandchildren. Also, I'd ask, and Ms. Perry will second this, that we adjourn in honor of Paul Winfield, who was an Academy Award-nominated actor, was known for the versatility on both the stage and film. He was nominated for an Emmy as Best Actor in the title role as Dr. Martin Luther King in the 1978 miniseries entitled King. Nominated the next year as the Best Supporting Actor in his movie role as Roots, The Next Generation. And in 95, he won the Emmy for his guest appearance in Picket Fences, where he played a federal judge, whose rulings on busing and inner-city kids was challenged by local residents. His first big screen activity was, he was hired by Sidney Poitier to play in the movie The Lost Man. He's got a variety of credits, one of which, most notable, he was a LA native, born Mace, 22nd, 1941, and he went to our local high school, Manual Arts High School, where he was named the Best Actor for three consecutive years in the annual Southern California High School Drama Competition. He passed away on Sunday, March 7th, in 2004, and he leaves his sister Patricia Wilson of Las Vegas, Nevada.
Ms. Perry.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I want to adjourn in memory of Jermaine Omar Choctaw, who was a peacemaker for the Gang Intervention Agency, Unity Two. And for those of you who follow LA Bridges, I think you would remember him, as I know he's been in council here many times. On Saturday, March 6th, Omar was tragically murdered at San Pedro and 84th Street during a drive-by shooting. This is a great tragedy. After spending his teenage years as a reputed gang member, the loss of several close friends moved Jermaine to refocus his life. He volunteered as a counselor to at-risk youth at the Los Angeles Unified School District and the Los Angeles County of Education. He spent the last several years of his life fighting crime with all that he had, the crime that ultimately took his life, and his services are pending. I would also like to adjourn in memory of a young man who was probably 20 years old, and he went by the name of Mr. Shaw, and he was shot to death last night at Slosson Recreation Center. He was a football player at Jefferson High School. And while he was known to the staff of the high school as a loner, he was not a bad child or a bad kid, and was not a gang member or an associate of a gang. During the time of the shooting, there were 10 people in the gym, shooting baskets, just having fun, no organized event. There were lots of little kids playing soccer on the field, probably about 40 people, children and their parents in the area, and 10 to 12 people in the parking lot where the shooting took place. There were two recreation and parks people inside working. This is the same location where three of our Rangers, who were there for extra patrol during a basketball tournament, were shot at during the early evening on January 15th, 2004. 14 to 16 rounds were fired at those Rangers who had to take cover behind their cars. Although, thank goodness, the Rangers did not receive any injuries from the incident, neither did any of the employees or the people visiting. This is what the people who go to Slosson Recreation Center have to deal with almost every day. And I adjourn in memory of this young man to keep us mindful of what the people we represent have to deal with as we go forward on our budget deliberations, and to do this in his memory. Thank you.
Other tributes? Mr. Clerk, please call the roll. Thank you all very much. This meeting is adjourned.